A proper planning commission to order, please. Madam Secretary, would you please call roll?
Mayor Gillespie. Councilman Bowles. Chairman Gardner. Vice Chair McAulley. Chief Johnson. Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Hall. Mr. Nelson. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes from February fifteenth and March fifteenth of last meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I was here for the March minutes. I move that they be approved as mail.
Do I hear a second? All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Move was the minutes was accepted as approved. We have some old business.
Chairman, excuse me, this March and February.
Yes.
February is through the March, I'm sorry. Yeah, February.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. That was just February that you approved.
February I was here, yeah, that's the one I was talking about.
All right.
I misquoted it, I'm sorry.
Thank you. On the March fifteen minutes, has everyone had a chance to review and read the minutes for March fifteenth? Thank you, Miss, do I hear a second? All right, it been moved in second. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Secretary. We have old business from for the preliminary planter of our home place resident, DePud, located at the intersection of Highway eighty-two bypass, McQueen Smith Road South. The owner is DHS Holden Four Incorporated and William Howard Murphy Irrevocable Trust. Representative is Clyde Chambliss. Mister, yes, it's been requested by Mister Chambliss to hold this for the next meeting of May fifteenth, May the seventeenth? Do I need a motion? Do I hear a second? Second, Madam Spohles. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign, thank you. The next order of business is some new business and it's rezoning of the B two. It's a general business from to our four multiple family. And this is a public hearing, it's the Pratt Mill Loft. And it's two oh one Gin Shop Hill Road. The representative is Pratt Mill Partners LLC. This is the public hearing at this time. Has everyone that want to speak, would you please get up and sign the book with the secretary if you want to speak? Everyone that intend to speak for or against? Yes. Yes, I'm gonna get them to come up and speak. I was getting, make sure that everyone that's want to speak for or against on this resolution at this time in public hearing are gonna sign in. If none other than, would y'all please come up and, Stu? Yes. Thank you, Mr. Duke. Now, would you please, representative for the Pratt Mill Loft? Say again?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, I appreciate you all coming out today. We have, as Joel has enlightened y'all, we've made an application to rezone the Pratt Mill from B two to R four. Our intent is to build a hundred and sixty units of loft-type multifamily, utilizing and sort of focusing on the historic structures that are currently in place. As you know, this is just a really beautiful iconic property. I certainly don't need to tell you guys how beautiful it is. But our general plan, as you know, there's a large component of it that's historic property, but a much more substantial component that's actually metal butler building. So our intent is to actually pull down a good percentage of the metal butler building to sort of reveal particularly the structure on this side, on the opposite side of the dam. It's been obscured by those butler buildings for so many years. And sort of really reveal how truly remarkable this property really is. And we'll be maintaining a little bit of the existing metal butler building as covered parking. But really, the focus up to now has been primarily on the historic property. And we're trying to figure out what we're gonna do with all the remaining property. But we are, in its current format, right now, the continental legal property is really sort of like a fortress unto itself. It's very fenced in and you really can't even see into it from the street for the most part. And our intent is to pull down all that fencing and open the side up so that it's much more available and approachable to the general public and much more aesthetically pleasing. So that is where we are right now. So this is the site plan as we currently have the project configured, focusing mostly on the existing structure. So, as you can see, it's about six different buildings. Right now, the metal butler building comes all the way out to here. And we're gonna raise all of that structure and leave a little bit of structure right in here for covered parking because in the summertime, it gets quite hot. So this is the plan that we've come up with and architect. So this is the site plan. And we also brought along an elevation that shows approximately what it would look like delivered. As you can see, it just makes a huge difference to remove all of that metal butler building structure. So all of this will be sort of greenscape that segues into the structure very well. This will be the covered parking component. We're actually gonna leave this little strip of metal butler building as a walkway so that our residents actually have covered parking from this section all the way into the buildings themselves. So our intent is to maintain as much of the historical flavor of the property as we possibly can. We'll be applying for historic tax credits and working with the National Park Service and doing the adaptive reuse to their specifications.
Sir, if you will, would you please turn that around so the audience may see it?
The site plan or the?
Both, if you will.
So this is, this is the plan. So really, it puts the emphasis on the historic portions of the property that are most important to use it to spur the destruction.
Mr. Chairman, if you could, sir, would you attempt to take the mic?
Yes, if.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
I'll try and address everybody. My name is Simon Tui. I'm partners with Burke Lambert on the project here. And he specified a hundred and sixty apartment units. And I just wanted to clarify, that's where we are on the program now. We're still working very hard to figure out how the units lay out. So that's plus or minus as we figure out. You know, there's one other building that we're potentially gonna try and save. We're trying to do our best to save as many of the historic buildings as possible that's also feasible as far as coming up with an appropriate number of apartment units.
So it's plus or minus one sixty to one seventy, depending on how we decide to figure it out. But it will all be essentially within these core group of historic buildings.
All right.
Any questions?
Does anyone have any question at this time, commissioners?
Would you put the other, well, I noticed the color here, we'll go to that later, we'll go to that later.
Okay. Can I answer anyone's questions?
Excuse me. Excuse me. He needs to speak in the mic so it can be recorded.
It appears in the drawing that there's a street running through the middle of the complex. What's it gonna tie into?
You're referring to this here?
Yes, sir. On the eastern terminus, what street is that tying into?
Well, we're still trying to figure out exactly what we're gonna do with this surplus acreage here. Our primary focus up until last week, actually, has been almost exclusively on. Has been almost exclusively on what the structural condition of the property is, what the civil engineering is gonna require, what the environmental condition of the property is, things of that nature. Because obviously, if we can't, if we can't do adaptive reuse with these buildings, then we can't do the project altogether. So that's really where our focus has been. But obviously, you know, the residents and the units are gonna be sort of focused on this particular area. And there's, as you know, quite a bit of acreage back in this area. And we're still trying to figure out exactly what we're gonna do there and how it's gonna be configured, but.
This road here exists and connects.
With this here, yes.
All right. Entrance to the main, this is the corporate office?
Right. So really, our intention in putting this road in here is, one, to give access to our parking here. But we also thought that it made sense to extend Maple through the property and tie it in with this existing ingress egress here. But, you know, it offers, as I mentioned, right now, the property is very closed. And so our intention is just to try and make it feel much more approachable and open. And obviously, over the course of doing the project, we're gonna have, you know, lots of landscape and greenscape. And the overall appearance of the property will be dramatically improved.
So you're basically gonna extend Maple Street to the center of the complex?
To connect with.
The main vision, that will be the main entrance and egress?
I would, yes, sir. Yeah, in our opinion, the primary ingress egress will come down Main Street, make a left onto Gin Shop Hill Road, and then turn right onto Maple and come in.
Really, that's called Brick Street, but that's.
Okay. Yep, you're right, you're right. That's Gin Shop Hills over here.
All right.
Would I ask another question?
Certainly.
Yes, sir, but.
You've undoubtedly run the numbers on this thing. And you know how much you can spend to fix it up, and you know how much it's gonna cost you and that sort of thing. Have you got a budgetary estimate as to what you're gonna rent these units for? And is that available to the public?
We are still running our diligence a lot. We still have a lot to do as far as, when you're rehabbing a building that's, you know, constructed in the eighteen fifty's, there's a lot of question marks out there. Right now, we are focusing on trying to create a rental product that is on the classification of an A quality rental complex. As far as where those rents will be right now, we can't say. But it will be on the higher end in the local area.
Thanks, sir. Does anyone else like to speak? If you haven't already, you need to sign in and come up to the podium and speak, please. She needs to come up here.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the committee. I just almost wanted to just readdress the question that was just asked before. The street that you referred.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Yes, the question is. The question is, first of all, I'm not against the project, for the project. But concerns are for Maple Street, which is the street that's gonna directly tie in to the. That's gonna directly tie into the development if that is the main point of access during construction. And then once there are a hundred and sixty odd residents. So how that would be handled is a concern. There's already a lot of traffic on that street, speeding on that street. It's a twenty-five mile an hour residential street, so I'd like the concern to go on the record.
Yes, ma'am, and for the record, we need to get your name and address if.
It's, I've signed in. Lisa Castaldo, one two four Maple Street.
Okay.
Thank you.
Leave the mic. Is it anyone else? Come on up, please. You've signed in already, sir?
No, I haven't.
Okay. Anyone else? Please come and sign in. Well, come on up to the podium, ma'am. And if you will, ma'am, let us have your name and address.
My name is John Lee Finnegan. Excuse me, I live at two eleven Deer Trace. And I didn't know this was a public hearing, I was just coming down to look. A couple of questions, are all those buildings, they're gonna be rental? So those are the hundred and sixties in that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Also, I noticed with the pool right here and everything, is there any flood concerns with that? I mean, I just, you know, because that's above the dam, and I don't know if we've had any flooding there.
Mr. Duke, would you address that, please?
Sure, I can address that. The, as you might imagine, along Atauga Creek, there are issues with the flood plain and that we will have to work with the developers to deal with those, just like you would in any property that's located in the flood plain. But yes, there is a flood plain that is associated with the Atauga Creek. And we're working through those issues, and they'll have to address those as required by local and federal regulations, so.
Thank you.
Also, on all, is this the only property that you acquired? Or is it across the creek also, or is this it?
This is our furnace right now, this is the only property out there.
Okay, but I mean, so you haven't gone to any of the other property? You haven't purchased any of that? Oh, okay. Yeah, well, I know, because you're wanting to get the rezoning, I understand that. Also, in order to extend Maple, and I don't know what the laws are or how that works, how do you extend a street and what's the timeframe that that takes? If you were gonna extend Maple?
Mr. Duke, again?
And Mr. Gardner, some of these things are still being discussed as a part of the development plan. And today, of course, is really just talking about zoning, but these are very appropriate questions. If they decide to extend the street and it becomes a public street, then that would be through the subdivision process, which requires a public hearing. And we'll be back before you to discuss that. But we expect to see that as they go along in the development process. This is, as Mr. Lambert mentioned, this is kind of early in their process. And dealing with the zoning doesn't necessarily require talking about the street as much as will be required when we get down to, say, issuing a building permit. So we're, those discussions are progressing and probably will be back before you, especially if they want to make that a public street.
Well, I'm just thinking, I'm trying to think of a timeframe before they can do all that. They have to get all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Also, regarding the units, are they gonna be several units? Or is it gonna be just, you know, one because, in high ceilings? Because I looked at that, there's an, in fact, where you're located. I looked at, not train, what is that called? The building you're located in Atlanta, your address. Yes, yes, I looked at that. And they were talking about like twenty-five foot ceilings and things like that. Yeah. So how are you thinking? I know you're getting into the planning, but how are you thinking? Is it gonna be several layers, levels of apartments? Is it gonna be one, et cetera?
They'll most likely be single-story units.
With the highest.
With this high ceiling and stuff. We're gonna leave the ceilings open. It's advantageous for us to leave them big and open because it's more aesthetically pleasing. People will like them.
Well, like I said, I looked at some of the ones for rent, and that was quite interesting. And these are all gonna be rental, so there's not gonna be any sales at all?
That's correct.
It's not gonna be condos? Okay, it's gonna be rentals? Okay.
Just to show you kind of how this is still in flux.
Okay.
There is a building here that we would like to potentially reserve or preserve. It's got a different type of structure, and there's some costs weighed into it. But if we were to be able to preserve it, that would be a higher ceilinged building, potential with mezzanine and stuff like that. Majority of the other buildings don't fall into that fashion. So there's a lot of things that are still in motion.
Because I thought that's just where they brought in the trucks and the loading dock, yeah.
But there's potential where you've got big patios and stuff, so.
Oh, okay.
But again, all of these are in flux as we're going through my investigation period, as well as our potential working with.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is it anyone else? Come on up, sir. If we, you have to come, excuse me, please come to the podium now, again.
My name is Fred Harris. My wife and I live at one forty-eight Maple Street, approximately five hundred feet from this project. So I'm very concerned about not only what these gentlemen are gonna do, but what this gentleman is gonna do. Is the wastewater sufficient in that area to handle all these rental units? Is the fresh water available there? Or is the city gonna be committed to spending a bunch of money on infrastructure outside of, you know, this little complex? I also have concerns about garbage. I've been in some apartment complexes where sitting at the egress or entryway are a couple of dumpsters. And as people go to work or wherever, they throw their garbage in the dumpster. And of course, that brings flies and vermin and all that kind of thing. And I think that's a thing the city ought to be considering. And my point in being here is not so much to question these gentlemen, but to express my concerns to the government.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Please come up, sir.
My name's Jeff Matthews, and I live on Bridge Street, one thirty-one Bridge Street. It's probably gonna be the one property that's gonna be most affected by this. And I think this is a great thing for the city. My two concerns. Number one, because of the top topography behind my house, I almost sit in a bowl. I know that it's gonna be basically like being locked in a Saint Mary's Cathedral bell tower while they're doing the deconstruction down there because all the noise funnels up that hill. And like I said, because of the topography behind me, it's probably gonna be months and months while they're doing this. And on top of that, my wife is home based with her business. And that's gonna be problematic for me. I mean, I'm not, I know it's progress and everything, I'm just telling you my concerns. But my biggest concern is the traffic. Now, when you all diverted all the traffic down Bridge Street because of replacing the bridge, it was very problematic. I mean, that's mark twenty-five miles an hour through there. And maybe ten percent of the people do twenty-five miles an hour through there. And because of where my driveway is and that fence line, I have very limited field of view down that road. So once I come around that turn, I've got maybe a hundred feet that I can see because of the fence line and the way that the road bends around there, that it's like running the gauntlet. I've gotta get to a point, look as far down as I can see, and then just cut my wheels and gun it up my driveway. And I can see it's gonna be a while before they can even make an access over there on Maple into their, the only access into the back part of that plant is on Bridge Street. Yeah, but I mean, to get into the backside of the plant where all those metal buildings, where they're gonna have to do all the deconstruction and rip out all that stuff, is over there on Bridge Street. I don't think coming in from the office side that you can get behind the physical plant itself. So, I mean, those are my two big concerns is, like I said, just that huge influx of traffic up that road. And me having to dodge all those bullets coming down the road while I'm trying to get up my driveway.
Thanks.
You live in a big lighthouse up on here?
Yes, sir.
Great place.
Yeah, we love it up there. And like I said, it's been idyllic. It's like living in the country, but having all the convenience of the city and everything. And, yeah, this is gonna be a big change for us. I mean, we basically had no neighbors, now we're gonna have hundreds, basically, in my front yard. And I know it's gonna change our.
Fortunately, I'm glad to live in there, I'm glad so much of that because that time passed, it's been an air that was not very favorable to the city, but now it is, and I appreciate you.
Yeah, well, like I said, I've lived all over the world. My dad was in the military. I call Pratt Mill my home, I call that my home. So, I mean, we love living up there, we think this is great for the city. I just wanted to voice those two concerns. The main thing is for the safety of my family and their ability to get up that driveway because, like I said, there is just so limited. If you go around there, you look and see where I've got to turn up my driveway and how short a sign alike or line of sight that you have down that road to see if somebody's flying down that road at you. So appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Mayor?
Thank you. And I would like to answer a couple of those questions there. There's definitely a lot of, those are some good questions. And there's still a lot of other questions that potentially can be out there that as you move along with the project, that you will have to look over. But I will assure you that the staff here is very, very informative of the procedures that this company needs to go through. They're also very aware of all the safety issues that need to be addressed if any of them do happen to come up. Where our sanitation department is, in my opinion, at this point in time, the wastewater department is as strong as that it has been in some time. And as far as the water, it's, that is actually a portion of the, that'd be a different portion than the city itself. But the Pratt Water Works is in very good shape as far as taking care of any kind of projects. One of the latest projects that I'm aware of was Medline, which took a very big water line, and they were able to accommodate it without any kind of issues at all. So I've, I do value each and every one of these questions that have been brought up. And I think that we can definitely get each and every one of them worked out without any kind of problematic issues. But I'm always available, my cell phone is always on.
Thank you, Miss Mayor. Are there any more questions? Say again, please?
May I ask just one more?
Yes, come on up, please.
How did you, how did you come up with the one hundred and sixty units?
That was basically done by our architect, who's done probably more of this kind of adaptive reuse than just about any architect himself. He's got a lot of experience with the best way to lay his units out. So what he did is he took the buildings that they're kind of alive, figured out the optimal way to do the adaptive reuse, such way they have comfortability for oil and units that work optimally and give great ambient light and have a different layout.
Could it change? I mean, I mean, what would be the percentage of change? Units that you might, you know, go up or down?
Difficult to say at this time, but it'll be approximately what it is now.
The one sixty?
Plus or minus.
Plus or minus, and then again, it includes all those three buildings that we see?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Duke, you have any comments?
Are you ready, are you ready for the staff report, or are you continuing the public hearing?
One minute, Mr. Hall. Say again, Mr. Duke?
I wasn't sure if you were, had closed the public. I wasn't sure if you were, had closed the public hearing, or if you were ready for?
I haven't closed it yet.
Okay, that's where I don't have any at this point.
All right, thank you. If there's no one else, then I close the public hearing. Thank you. Mr. Nelson?
Yes?
Please, if you would, would you read the resolution?
Resolution, rezoning request B2 to R4. 201 Gen Shop Hill Road, Continental Eagle Corporation petitioner, April 19th, 2012. Whereas Continental Eagle Corporation is the owner of the property described in attachment A and shown in attachment B, and whereas the property to be rezoned is located inside the city limits at 201 Gen Shop Hill Road, and whereas the petitioner wishes to rezone the property from B2 General Business to R4 Multifamily, and whereas a public hearing on the proposed rezoning was held by the Prattville Planning Commission on April 19th, 2012. Therefore, now be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby recommend the rezoning of said property from B2 to R4. I so move, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by both. We are open for a comment. Mr. Duke, can we get your report now?
Yes, sir, as you've heard, this is total acreages, 42 acres there on the west side of Attler Creek.
Mr. Duke, would you speak up for the, they can't hear you in the rear.
I will do my best, Mr. Gardner.
Thank you.
The, the property is currently, as, as you've mentioned, is owned B2 General Business. The property was rezoned back in 2004 at the request of the Planning Commission from M1 to B2, and this request to R4 is really a continuation of moving that property into a classification that is more in line with the city's master plan. As we mentioned in our staff report that you received last week, the property in the master plan is shown as being mixed-use commercial, and on the surface, that may seem like that this residential classification is, may not fit, but if you read further into the comprehensive plan, you'll, you'll note that that classification of mixed-use commercial is really talking about the general area, and the mixed-use portions looking at adding uses that are complementary to the, the overall commercial nature of, of this portion of downtown. Basically, if, if you look through the comprehensive plan, you'll find that what we're hoping for downtown is to add rooftops. We have plenty of commercial property that is available for lease. What we need is activity downtown, more downtown living. We've gotten some of that over time with some of the buildings being converted to a few loft apartments, but this is by far the, the largest conversion to residential that we've seen, and is in, very much in line with what is proposed or what is sought in, in the city's master plan. There've been a, a number of questions about traffic, about floodplain, about the adequacy of the sewer, adequacy of city water, whether or not garbage will be picked up or shielded away from, from adjacent neighbors. Those questions will, will be answered as we go along in the development process. All of those are covered by city ordinance. There will have to be determination as to whether or not there is adequate wastewater services, which there, we've made a preliminary determination that, that there is adequate service, there's adequate water service at this time, but as, as their project comes more into focus and they actually submit something for code review, then we'll be able to, to address those questions. Be glad to answer any, any further questions at this time, Mr. Gardner.
Yes, does any of the commission have any questions for Mr. Duke at this time? I have a question.
Yes, sir.
When Continental Eagle was in full operation, approximately how many employees did they have? If you know.
Mr. Gardner, I, I couldn't tell you that off the top of my head, and I, I probably should know that. They, their, their workforce has fluctuated over, over time, and, but in, in modern time, it's, it's been somewhere around a hundred at probably peak, and has declined steadily from that point over the last probably two decades, so. But I can, that information is available, I just don't have it with me at this moment.
And for control of traffic during that time, especially with your larger trucks, if you will, if you don't know, at this moment, did you get that information for us to let us know, how did you control the traffic of the vehicles at the time when it was in, possibly in full operation?
Yes, sir. If we want to talk about traffic, we can, and how it was dispersed from the site, as you're probably aware, the loading dock for the complex is currently located there off of Maple Street.
That's correct.
Excuse me, off of Bridge Street, there, where Maple Street tees into it. That's been accessed either from coming around Bridge Street from Gen Shop Hill Road or coming through the middle of downtown. So, over time, we've, you know, seen a decrease in that truck traffic, but I've been here roughly 15 years, and I can remember a time when quite often you had deliveries going to, to Continental Eagle. From an employment side, the traffic generally parked on the, the northwest side of this property, you know, but there was no set access point. Traffic has always come at, at that site from, from all, all directions. But the primary access for, for employee parking was off of Gen Shop Hill Road.
Thank you, Mr. Duke, then.
Thank you.
If, are there any questions? Any more questions from the commissioners? If not, for the resolution, the rezoning request from B2 to R4, all in favor of this resolution, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Motion pass. And, thank you. The next order of business is, let me see, is that a public hearing? I believe we have another public hearing, and that's the preliminary plat of Breifield Estate, plat number one, located off of Bridge Creek Road, owner is Stinson Development, engineer and representative is Jarvis and Associates. This is a public hearing, and if you please, if you want to speak for or against, please come up and sign. Do we have anyone to speak against or for?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Larry Jarvis, it's been a while since I've been down here, but it's good to be back and good to have another subdivision maybe starting up.
Good to see you.
So, hopefully, we can get this one off the ground and get it going. This is Briarfield that we came down to the city with about four or five years ago, it was 2007 or '08, got the plans approved, we really had this same layout, the streets are the same, the only thing that's changed, there's 50 lots instead of 43. We had 75-foot lots before, and now we have 65-foot lots. They're about 66 or 67 feet, but we're calling them 65. So, really, the only change we have in this layout, we've not changed the boundary of phase one, we've not changed the length of the roads, we've not changed length of the sewer line, or length of the water line, or the length of the sidewalk. It's all the same except for the lot changes. And so, we're requesting to go from 75-foot lots that we had laid out before to 65-foot lots now. We've always worked great with the city, got a good group of people that we like to work with, we'll do whatever we've got to do to address their comments, and we just want to move forward.
And this is a public hearing, Mr. Jarvis, now?
Yes, sir, that's fine.
We don't have anyone to speak, so I close the public hearing. Councilman Bowles, if you will, read the resolution.
Whereas Stinson Development Incorporated is owner and developer of Briarfield Estates 1, and whereas the proposed development is located inside the city limits on the west side of Bridge Creek Road on the north of Durden Road, and whereas stretch plan of Breifield Estates was approved on August 3rd, 2006, and whereas the preliminary plat for the proposed subdivision was approved on July 7th, 2007, and whereas a public hearing on the proposed subdivision was held on April the 19th, 2012, and whereas the required city departments have reviewed and committed to the proposal primary plat, now therefore be resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby give its favorable review of sub, of the sub-mined, prevent, sorry, permitted plat of Briarfield Estates 1. I so move.
Thank you, Councilman Bowles. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hall. We open for discussion. Mr. Duke, can I give you a report?
Just go ahead and echo a little bit of what Mr. Jarvis said about this plat. This plat was originally approved with the exception of the width of the lots back in June 7th, 2007. We had a couple of extensions that were granted, I believe the last one was 2010, and then it was allowed to expire. The developer, the owner did not request any further extensions, and as a result, this needed to come back before you. Also, the, the change in the, the number of lots or the width of the lots requires your approval as well. The lots that are requested at roughly 65-foot wide are within the allowable width under the R3 zoning that is in place on this property. You can see that the city is, staff has provided several comments, really just asking for additional We expect to receive that and have received some already, and can work those out with the developer if you see fit to grant approval. We would not release it for construction until those items were covered.
Does anyone have any question of Mr. Duke? Let me speak, Mr. Jarvis? Have you entertained the questions that was put forth through by the planning department?
Yes, sir, I have reviewed those. Is there any specific, we, we intend to comply with, with all of those. There's nothing, now, one, one thing that I wanted to point out, and it's like Joe said before, we've been through those before, and I understand, I think we've got most of those resolved from when we got the first set of plans approved. There may, if there's some new regulations that weren't in effect at that time, sure, we need to address those. But just like one thing was, I noticed that they had like, provide connections to the adjacent properties, this one was, this one was already there.
Okay.
This is on phase one. On the overall development, there's also another one going to the north that's over here, so we, we were doing that. And, and nothing, nothing's changed, unless they're wanting some additional connections. And, and there, again, we'll work with, with the departments, you know, whatever we need to do.
Okay. Mr. Nelson?
What about you? Lots, uh?
32 and 38 revised layout.
The 32 and 38?
What have you done about that?
I'm trying to find, 32, and here's 32. If it's the same, that could be a different covering scheme. Okay, 38, okay. That one, we, we'll just need to check and see if we can fit our house within the building line there.
Okay.
And if we can't, we'll swallow it up into another lot.
I heard that. Okay, bro.
All right. Any more question of any commissioner?
I don't have any, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jarvis. For the resolution of preliminary plat, Briarfield Estate, number one, all in favor of this resolution, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Motion, the resolution pass. Secretary? We had some guests come in for the Canutria.
I haven't seen them.
Haven't seen them?
They were here, I think they got, went out with the, the big group.
Oh, okay, I think they got a little excited in, huh? All right. Any, any, uh, thing the update is on, Mr. Duke?
No, sir, if you'd like, I can ask those folks to come back if they were looking to speak to you today.
Yes, if you will, please, because they was at them on my body.
Can I be excused, please?
Uh, you may, Mr. Mr. Hall. Let the record show that Mr. Hall is being excused.
Turn it over, you leave speed, not there.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Just for the record, I worked at Bushup, like in '73 to '76, there were 735 people that worked there then, no traffic. The only thing I ever remember happening back there, right across the bridge, was a guy on a motorcycle playing into a car back there. It was never, it was 700, 800, 900, 100.
Mr. Gardner, I, I believe they've given up on you for the day, so.
If no other things, for the planning commission, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Duke.
Thank you.
You know what's so ironic is that, uh?